Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting being held here at the Town Hall, September ninth, two thousand and twenty five. I call this meeting to order at five P M. Next on our agenda, public forum, any public comment? Being none, moving on to correspondence. In your packet, you have correspondence from N E C O G. Your pages one through three.
If I may introduce, in that packet, you'll have July, and then my questions about July, and then the August report.
Do you have questions for us, or?
No, for N E C O G, and they answered them, so that was in the packet, since it was an unusual report.
Alright, right. And then, so look over the correspondence, if you have other questions, just look.
Oh, I know. It is tiny.
Under three point two, we have our two pages, July and August reports submitted. That jet need good eyes for two. And three point three, the Cart Street Substation Sound Study on page six. And then, on three thing four, we've got a thank you note from the line.
That was very nice to.
And nothing else under correspondence at this point. Alright, moving on to department reports. I don't know if we have Jay, hold on, I don't.
We do not.
Robin is who?
The attorney. The attending.
So let's forego the fire department report at this point. How about moving on to four point two, our finance department report, your pages eight or nine.
Okay. It's just the first two months of the fiscal year, so there's no strange going on, or any outliers at this point in time. It's been busy in the finance office. We've had our friends here, the auditors, for the past week or two. Asking lots of questions, so we've been dealing with them and trying to comply and get the audit done by December third and the first and stay on track for that. Other than that, everything's pretty smooth.
No, if you have anything, you sometimes have things that you just pay off on a yearly basis or something.
A lot of the computer software maintenance agreements, like Department four fifteen, that is almost fifty percent right now. Because we do pay a lot, the annual subscriptions upfront.
Okay.
Very good.
But you think that that's going to be within budget too?
Yeah.
Right now.
Any questions for Haley?
The only, you know, that's questionable is legal, because we did not budget the increased hourly rate, so that might be an issue, you know, as we get more into the budget. You know, in months to come, but.
And that means with the minimum wage, or with the, that's with the entire, the.
The hourly rate, I think, went from one fifty to two fifty.
Legal.
Yeah, to sixteen ninety five.
Other questions or comments for Haley? Alright, four point three, Department of Public Works, Dean.
We've been busy. Roadside mowing. Continuously roadside mowing, finishing up our road work on Goshen and Kingsley. And we're in the middle of oxy right now.
We got all the, we got the okay from in the last night.
Yeah, for the culvert, so we're scheduling that for a road closure for a day. Get that culvert in.
Do you have any idea when?
Probably, but we're leaning towards possibly doing it on a Saturday. That way we're not worried about bus interruptions and stuff like that. They're thinking we should go and get the pipe across those one day.
And we also have a plan to let all the neighbors know, as well as the surrounding town. And get the correspondence out to our EMS services, knowing exactly when that road is going to be down.
Yeah, once I have a, they'll have time for the pipe coming to get here.
And you're doing, because there was discussion of putting two smaller pipes or one larger one, we're doing the one larger. And how many, how big is that?
It's a orange pipe that's seventy-one by forty-seven.
Thanks.
Now it's replacing a thirty-inch concrete. We're doing patch paving right now, puddles. We try to sub down tree crews cutting at least three to four days a week. For whacking away at trees.
So one of the big things that's coming up, obviously, is September twenty seventh.
That guard rail schedule for the green.
Mowing, anything like that.
Green's gonna happen.
A lot of people coming into downtown Lebanon to look at it, so talk to our lawnmower people and.
Yeah, we're gonna try to mow the green this week, so we'll have time to re-green after we mow it. So we'll look.
And I did see one of the farmers out there actually hanging today, so that's, that's, that's good.
And the guard rails, when are those looking to?
Their plan, their schedule, these done this call before you did, so I would imagine any time they'll be here to those.
One thing that a resident mentioned to me, and I didn't get a chance to talk to you on it yet, is Smith Road. Coming off of Goshen Hill, you know, the bridge that was out and the guard rails and stuff there, the weeds are like all on. And I said that that is a historic scenic road, do you know what I mean?
Coming in, rate it off.
Okay, well, that'll take care of when you grade it, okay. Alright, yeah, no, that was just that, on one side particularly, I guess they're really more in the road than the others, so. I explained it was a scenic road and that that limits, you know, what we can do without going to planning and zoning and.
Yeah, but we are going, I don't know when you have it scheduled for November, December.
Yeah, just before it gets cold, you know, we try to go grade everything before.
And we'll go before planting and zoning, just a lot of. Other questions for Dean? Alright, thank you, Dean. Well, don't go anywhere, because when you're getting coming up, we've got a couple of questions for you under unfinished business. Moving on to selectmen's report.
On your page eleven, we have the August report for the Facebook page. We only did twelve posts, we had over twenty-six thousand views. Our top post was Sandy's retirement post with almost eight thousand views. There was also, you know, hundreds of likes, lots of comments, lots, it's great to see that love. Then we had our special town meeting, and then our Eyes on Lebanon, which is always a, you know, a high view post. Our YouTube channel, nothing too crazy, we have sixty-eight videos on there right now, twenty-seven subscribers. Our rentals in August, we did take in some income at the community center, we had a pool party. Otherwise, it's been used by our nonprofits, our local board of information members. Foya requests in August, we had two, they were primarily for the finance department. Pistol permits are on there, and then Eyes on Lebanon, I just, I wanted to put something in there for the paper. So in last month's edition, we collected one thousand three hundred dollars in ads. It does cost about sixteen hundred for the full edition, so we're doing pretty good, and that was six paid ads. Our printing company did make an error, and they did not expand our colored pages. This has been addressed with Greg at the very reminder, and we should be okay moving forward.
Questions? Comments for Sarah, the sense team? Moving on to five point oh, motions in order to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So now.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, do I have any questions or comments? Being none, all in favor of accepting, signify by saying aye. Both, ice habit. Moving on to six, unfinished business, Dean, thank you for staying. Tell us a little bit about the D P W building, where we are and our progress.
Let's dig in. I see that. They're doing the slab today, and they're starting to do it for the foundation.
Okay.
Hopefully, this time next week, the foundation will be done. Been ready for concrete guys, I know the concrete guys, you waiting, actually waiting, so. Yeah, barring any catastrophes, we'll be, we're moving right on.
And you have a building committee meeting tomorrow too, as well. Does, there's gotta be some type of coordination between the slab and then the H V A C, does that happen now?
Yeah, the foundation gets done, and everything gets backfilled, and then we do the plumbing and the H V A C and electric, whatever's going in this lab.
Gotcha.
With the great slab, with the membrane down, with the piece on in. Actually, the building goes up after it's back, everything is backfilled, then the building goes up, once the building is up, then we finish the interior.
Have we had any issues or problems with some of the machinery vehicles over at the?
Haven't heard, we gotta do a little shuffling around the firehouse.
Okay.
Jay asked for us to shuffle some stuff around, but.
Okay.
You know, the guys aren't happy about walking across the street, but we shuttle them back and forth.
Well, I was more concerned about the U M S to be.
Obviously, we try to stay in the back and down towards the towns.
Okay, alright.
Did you find anything unexpected as you were digging, as they were digging?
No, they haven't dug yet, but everything is graded off, and actually, all the material that we found so far is pretty nice material. So, you know, the unsuitable stuff, we'll find out tomorrow when we start digging, or where we gotta take the topsoil off and stuff like that, but so far, no surprises.
Good.
Good. Other comments for the D P W building? Alright, fire, fire department substation, I know, Phil, you've been working with the fire department on that, for any other?
We were, we were looking. An executive session by the end of the year to talk about property.
Very good. Well, I got you, how about any news on the affordable housing projects?
Nothing on the affordable, I think.
Fire safety complex room, Dean, wanna touch base, let the board know?
Repair they did didn't work. We still have one week.
We got it handled down on one week.
We're down to one spot in the meeting room at the fireside.
Alright, and?
Reach out to Brian, do the museum, the roofing company.
Okay.
Monday, send them an email, let them know. There's still an issue, so.
It's, it's been pinpointed to pretty much, or?
Literally one spot, it's one tile that's wet. So they just have to find out where it's coming from.
Okay. How are we doing on payments?
Yeah, have repaid them.
I think we still holding some contingency funds.
We have eleven thousand balance still left with that. Because they asked, he asked me for, you know, their July payment, I said, as long as we have, you know, what do we have for contingency left? He said eleven thousand, so. We need to hold.
You're working that out with the contractor and the engineer.
And hopefully, it'll get done before it gets too cold and freezing and expanding.
Last time they were out with it, so.
How long can you hold on to that contingency? In construction world, over a year.
How about this building and that?
The coupole?
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything from Brian, so I can reach out to him.
Because that leak doesn't appear to be getting better.
West Jersey wins, yeah.
Alright, thank you, thanks for taking care of that. Six point five, the I T Advisory Group, who do you want to take down?
The I T Advisory Group is wonderful, and they have been working for the past two months on a proposal to update our website. We are being forced to update our website, because the backend of the website is no longer working. So they looked over all of the very high technical contracts to explain what SoundCloud Flare means and all sorts of things. And then we kept going back to Civic Plus with lots of questions until we were satisfied, and that is under new business, you will see. I tried to give a summary of the sequence of how it all went down, but we would like to move forward, and we're very thankful for their guidance.
Well, I'm going for, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
No, they've been a great help.
Very good, very good. And if you have any questions, just let us, let us know, and we can get into the I T Advisory Group. For the record, it's always good when you pop into a meeting and you have no idea what the hell they're talking about.
Speaking a different language.
It's, yeah, it's of my pay grades, so. Moving on to the slam study, school study, so that pro, that part of the venture is, you know, in the sunset, we're getting rid of that, thank you for all for coming out to the town meeting. So we haven't, we have established a building committee, now we just gotta fill it. So that's underway, when we're looking at October for a town meeting?
Yeah.
So it's our purview to to appoint, you know, a building committee. So if you want, we can set up some type of meeting, we can, we're still getting applicants even today. And go over them, so that's, you know, up to the board, if you want to do that, probably at a special board of selectmen meeting, we have another one probably in a couple of weeks anyway. We can incorporate that, get you that information, and you know, I don't know if you want resumes, or just, you probably know most of them.
I plan to print out whatever they submitted, so that everyone's on the same queue.
So it looks like, as I said at the town meeting, it looks like about seven people for that, that commission, and.
We now have eight applicants.
So, and, but no deadline has been posted, right?
Have not posted a deadline.
So, but it will be Kevin, Mike.
At this point now, the, the, there was. Board of that, Board of Finance, and Board of Selectmen, so that's three. Jim had requested to be there, but again, the final, the final, the final appointment comes from this, this body.
So really, there's four vacant, four opportunities, yeah.
Are those board seats ex officios, and then seven, or are they?
Seven total.
Part of total seven.
So would you be filling the role as, as you technically sit on all commissions at once?
Yeah, at this point, notice there's a change in, in the future, yeah.
So just as we plan out, because then we have to also do party neutral.
Right, so we have, we have a Board of Finance, Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen, and that gives us four spots. Jim Russo has stated, but again, all decisions come through here, I'll get you all that information. And as you said, yeah, we have to look at our charter and make sure that we have party affiliations, you know, addressed.
Which was in the application, so we have that for everybody.
I would think that in the next newspaper, that we should say the final deadline, if you're interested, is X. Because I think without that, there's some, no, nobody really knows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and with that, if we wanted to address this at town meeting in October, we'd just have to make sure that the town meeting would be after. This board is just a point, okay.
To form the.
Yeah, we did that, yeah, we did that, okay.
And authorize the money, you saw that.
The two hundred thousand.
The two hundred thousand just ordered in.
So the only thing with the newspaper is that it won't go until the end of the month, which would then limit the time in which for turnaround, is there a date that you have in mind for the deadline? Like October twenty or something, I don't know, we'll have to look at the calendar, but.
Yeah, yeah, and then October, and this is Friday.
Yeah, let's go with October tenth.
And then we can read, write the applications, I suppose.
That, maybe that next week.
Were you anticipating with the people, or we're just reading there?
I don't know.
Okay. Give us the week of Columbus Day.
The deadline for the applications, and then, then you can.
Have a special.
And then we can plan something.
Just so we have. Have a special town meeting for the.
Undesigned, yeah.
There's a couple of things we need another town meeting for this surplus, and also this, the snowplow went over twenty thousand, so we need that. Because we can't transfer it from contingent to another town meeting.
I think it gets on at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah. The police are okay. But last time we did, right, police was on last.
And I think there's something else that you'll probably never get soon.
That takes care of slam, so. So the slam study, we, that was just an incorporated subcommittee, so there's nothing really to do there. And as that gets sunsetted, we'll have our building committee, and they'll be often have their charge. Six point seven, Bachi Ball, I did talk to Brandon, and he, it's in his hands, he's working on it.
And. I can't believe we're spending time on Bachi Ball. I don't want to be disrespectful to the people who asked for it, but I think we have bigger pressing needs than Bachi Ball perks. Sorry. Fully apart, fully partial. They weren't gonna raise all the money, they had money from their friends. But we used what money from Brandon? We took money from some, oh, I know where we took money from.
We have money left over.
The med shed, so we got money donated for the med shed, yeah, and that extra money, they were gonna help, they were gonna use to engineer this thing. But I thought you played Bachi on your lawn. Sorry.
I don't know.
I don't know.
A lot of people seem to want it. I don't think I have anything else under old business, is there anything else? Moving on to new business. Seven point one, discuss and approve the map of the new plannings of the Lebanon Town Green presented by the Lebanon Green Tree Planting Committee. Dennis, thank you for showing it up. So we have approximately, how many trees, thirteen?
Yes.
Alright, so, and then we did request last month for a map, which you have submitted.
So I had, may I ask questions?
Yeah, we're gonna open this up, you know, for the, for the, the board here, you know, directed towards.
Right, and I'll also defer to Phil Chester as well. Because it's going in front of the Design Review Committee. And that's, that's, you know, we may put the brakes on that tonight, but it's up to the Board of Selectmen, I wasn't aware that it hadn't gone before the Board of Selectmen, so obviously, it starts with you, it's your application to the Design Review Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I was just trying to get it fast-tracked for Monday's Planning and zoning meeting, didn't have the planner even fallen there, next meeting will be October twentieth. But with that said, I met with Dennis a few times, starting on Thursday, when he first told me and Kevin that the Board of Selectmen had appropriated funds for this, I thought that meant approval. And, and then he started to work on, I showed him how to work, he's our G I S mapping system. And he, we, we went out, we saw where some of our markers, three marked out there with tags that actually show the species. I have some map with Dan Moore, I talked briefly with Joe Nichols. We're on the Replanting Committee. And then when Dennis sent me the rest of the maps, was it yesterday? I noticed that the one for the library in the back, planting, is shown on the septic area, so he redid a map, accepted for me. I did not forward it to anyone, so there is a new map, but it sounds like you're talking with Kevin and looking more closely. Dennis kept saying these are areas where it's not exactly, we put it isn't exactly where the trees are.
Okay, so let me, let me cut right to the chase here, let's start off with the first map, it says forty-five.
What, Petri, you are on page thirty, page thirty, okay, yes.
That is a liberty tree that's being done by Sons of the American Revolution, right? Now, is, help me understand, is that on the where that little red dot is? Is that on the eastern side of the walkway?
Yes.
It's on the, if that's where it's tagged, okay.
Correct. It doesn't show, they can't go too far, right, those are into the feeling.
Right, no, I get that, I mean, I'm just looking at, there's, there's no other trees planted on the western side of that walkway, right?
No, there's no trees on that side.
On that side, okay.
Yeah, right, because they're very short. It's swells. And it swells there.
Alright, so does that look does that look alright with everybody, that, that liberty tree on that side, right across the, the war office? Does that look like it's any impingement on usable farm, land that is being farmed, or is that just part of the regular mowing?
That's, that is within the mow line.
The mowing of the town mower, or the mowing of the hay, for the farmer?
Town mower. Contract, yeah, we were on one, yeah, one width, five yards feet off of that.
So from a principled standpoint, we're gonna let an outside entity plant a tree on the green, and we're okay with that.
We are, we are taking care of that task.
I get it, so I'm from the Catholic Church, and I want you to plant the tree that we're gonna pay to have planted, I'm just saying, what are, is this the, are we going to permit this for the future? Not trying to create a mountain out of a molehill, but.
No, so the, the, the two independent agencies really are the S A R and the library here, the rest is.
No, yes, they are, D A R, not the same.
No, they're not. Jonathan Trent.
My, my point being, I don't want to.
But they want to.
So there's an outside, non-town function, the group that wants to put a tree. You know, we're going to get into the bench drama again, so I, I want to donate a bench in memory of whomever.
We put that fire out, that's not done at that much.
Hey, but we just said that's an S A R tree, right?
Only the tree. All it's going in, and possibly a metal stake marker. Possibly.
So that's, 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 I understand your point, that's number, that's the first, that's the first of the trees. Alright, so.
I just have a question. Is that just a shadow, or is that a tree that is in close proximity?
It looks like a tree.
Do you see how it's close proximity here?
Here, the tree is here, that's the shadow.
Yes, yeah, and this.
It is directly across the driveway from the War Office.
Okay. The tree that they're going to be putting in.
Opposed, the tree that's going in there is directly across from, and, and the house.
The house in the back.
The house in the back, basically right on that edge line.
Okay, and I can see now that Betsy has pointed out the tree is further up, across from one seventy-four, and it's six eight.
Joan Nichols has the exact waypoints, he has the exact waypoints. I just didn't have the technical savvy to put a waypoint in against them.
It's in a group of trees, existing tree. I think the other perspective, of what you're bringing up is is the one we would need to have, we should have a policy on.
In the Eastman documents, it doesn't speak toward, it speaks towards no benches, no more benches. Actually, there can be one bench, and it has to honor the original founders of the town, that's the only bench is still allowed out there, that has never been done. It does talk about the types of trees, but it does not talk about, to my recollection, a donation of a tree. That's something that has to be managed by here.
So that's the, I guess that's the issue, I know the S A R has been in contact with the Historical Department, Historical Society. But they still gotta go, and this particular area is under the business, the. Uh, but they still gotta go, and this particular area is under the business, uh the Village Business District.
No, no, village, we, it doesn't matter, they're all Design Review Board.
Right.
Okay, we look at it as that they're basically donating the tree.
I I have no problem doing that, as long as we.
That this and with the plan that the committee is trying to execute. Last question, the the, when you guys formed the. Green Replanting Committee, was it just a, is it ongoing, or was it to uh plant these thirteen trees?
It was to on go, to look at all the trees that were dying on the on the green.
Now.
Now, and to to come on up with options.
And then, and then.
And locations.
And and the trees need to be native to this area.
It's just a tree they're recommending.
Yeah, yeah, so for my point, you know, just personally. This one here on what page, thirty?
Thirty.
I don't have an issue with that one.
Okay.
Alright, and I think this is the only parish where you go through it, Dennis, but moving on to page thirty one. Where it says planting trees in that you have this planting area, see?
Yes.
Alright, you have the two by the Saint Francis Church.
Go ahead.
That is no, not gonna happen in a, in a, in a. In a farming, you know, what they're doing. So when you're telling me that this is of close proximity.
Yeah.
That's one thing. If it's in what we've mowed already. You know, that's different, but you know, if you, if I'm I'm just looking at this, I just for clarity. And I'm on page thirty one.
This is on the inside of the walking tree, where it's the center of the green, right?
Planting area C.
That where the stakes aren't, the stake, yeah, we already have the stakes there.
Yeah.
And. There, you may probably have to walk around, you'd have to walk, well, I I can see the walking area. It is in the mow line, the contractor mow line.
No, it looks down this way, it's in the hay line, it's in the line of the farm haze.
Don't, these, don't, don't take these for verbatim.
Okay.
Again, don't take these for bit.
Okay.
These are just approximate locations, I couldn't get it. I, so maybe in your write-up, it needs to say that, you know, how. Yeah, it's within six.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you need to, that all trees. You know, that no trees are gonna be planted.
No tree, no, but I don't think these trees are in the hay line, I think they're in the hay fields at all.
We need to go take a picture of each of these locations.
Well, I think some of us are gonna be out there uh September eleventh anyway, so we'll stop and take a look.
Yeah, if you walk the green. You've also agreed that he already staked with Joan Nichols and Dan Moore.
So all of these are staked?
These are all staked.
Just for for me to understand, I'm just gonna call this, you know, these, you know, plant areas, see, I'm just gonna call it two or three.
Are physically staked and there are specific waypoints.
And they're across from Saint Francis.
They're across from Saint Francis.
So see, those are the ones that were questioned.
So that planting areas V is pretty much the same thing?
Yes. By the proximity.
That looks like it's really close to the walk.
Now, planting area B, let me just add, we are not planting until spring of twenty sixth, those two chestnut trees. Okay, because.
Okay, I would, you're, what what's, which ones is that?
Planting area. Item number two.
Yeah.
Planting area B, as you can see. Those are chestnut trees. Those won't be planted till spring of twenty sixth. Okay, so.
Which is listed on your page twenty nine, where it is an itemized list of the type of trees, many other notes.
That's spring done.
Because of inventory issues in.
Okay. So I I liked what Dean said, within the six feet of the walkway, which is. Which is what we maintain.
Yes.
And it's outside the the scope of what the farmers are doing.
Nothing, right. You just have to decide, again, this is one of the things that I asked Dan Moore and and you. By the way, when Dennis came into my office on Thursday, there wasn't an appointment made, I wasn't assigned to this.
No, we get it, it was just a cold call.
Um, six feet. Depending on how large the thing grows, obviously, you know, and if it's planted directly in the middle. There isn't a lot of space, right? And uh but that's just.
But they're all, they're all staked out.
They're all staked out, yes, so, you know, one. Means it's approximately six feet, the mow line is what, maybe ten feet?
It's, we usually want to hassle the mower.
Yeah, if there's a tree there, they're mowing around the back.
Yeah. Yeah, so, okay, I get it, and I know what we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at the state lines. Right, so let's move on to. Well, I was wondering what the states are all about.
It's so. And what kind of trees are the C, area C, oh, sorry.
So those are very trees that won't grow big, they're not, they're. Free, they're pretty and they're, the area, why they chose but um they're there because of this, the limited size. And it complements the larger, for instance, chestnuts.
Yeah, chestnuts, right.
Does that include the the SAR tree and the library, the dental library tree at this point?
Um. So. The trees listed in either two are twelve, twelve down there, that doesn't include the Liberty. But it does include. The library tree, I think Dogwood.
That was down here.
I only concern with the chestnuts, it's nuts.
So we could, we could revisit that prior to planting. Those, now here. They make great moral pleasures for all.
So if you cut them, I don't know anything about this, but if you cut, if you cut hay. And the chestnuts get in the hay and you feed the critters with hay with chestnuts in it, is it good or bad? I don't know the answer to some question.
Or, you know, since this is utilized by dogs, yeah, I mean, what I do, you know, does. Do dogs eat chestnuts? Do they gnaw on them? Is there any risk? I don't shake the, chestnuts would get picked just like that.
Okay.
Like they shake out.
I'll rely upon others that are experts.
Yeah, alright, so.
I told you I had to leave a quarter of, um, you guys are doing a walk on the level?
At six o'clock.
A community event has something to do with the Board of Selectmen?
We're just out there, we're not warning that, we're just.
Oh, that's fine.
This says true American and sweet chestnuts are safe and can be nutritious for dogs when cooked, de-shelled.
Alright, so we.
What it says, but it says when.
So I'll touch base with you as far as whether, you know, I should postpone the Design Review Board.
I don't think there's anything definitive to give to the Design Review Board.
Yeah, I agree, it sounds like you're still figuring it out.
Yeah, it needs to go.
And it won't get remapped by, right.
Because so far it seems great, you know, it, you know, ob- obviously, you know, you wanna take a look at where the posts are, and you did your due diligence of. You know, this is where we're planting them.
And we just need to know what kind of chestnuts too, because they say horse chestnuts are highly toxic. But water chestnuts are also safe for dogs to eat.
I just, yeah, we'll, we'll talk again.
So, just.
I'll play it after this.
Not March, okay, you don't.
No, it's okay.
No, it's not, okay.
Okay, okay.
Let's move on to page thirty two. Now, that area there, Dennis, that's kind of wooded already, right? I've. I don't know if there's, we do do some mowing up there, Dean, right? And again, we just have to look, the, it, is that also close to a walkway, Dennis, or?
No, it's not, yeah, it's beyond.
It's in the middle.
It's in the space. Um, planting area D, and he just fills spaces that are voids. Um, with the intent that when these, these trees in planting area D and E mature, the other ones may perish. So it's, it's a cyclical.
Yeah, and that's a very wet area over there.
Yes, so. And more recommendation that you get trees that are um sustainable in those.
Okay, that's like a park-like area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the only thing that's out there, Dean, is also that little.
Memorial.
Memorial, I'm all the way at the end, yeah, right, and then you have that little walkway, that's getting kind of run way down.
The plan always was that if there was that last bench put in, it would be put in up there.
Alright, so. Now. On page thirty three, this is a concern. Because, you know, the way these look. You know, it's right in in the middle of the of the field.
Yeah, I I put those, I put those in in act right there.
Yeah, this is the mow line right here.
They're drawing the mow line right there.
Is it right this side of the app?
The only other concern I have for that is that is overflow parking. And where for um the Summer Dance Fest.
Right.
As well as other antique, anything that are.
Right, so, so planting area F, two east to west, those are much, if if you look at the physical stakes. That are planted here, those are much closer to the walkway path. So if this is my. My PowerPoint.
Okay.
Here.
Yeah. Alright, cause that would be, that would be, you, a a big concern for me right here. Only for the fact that I do know that, you know, during those couple of times of the year. Uh, it's the only place that people come.
But these are state, right? These are already state.
Everything's state, okay.
Right, and that, again, Nichols and.
Right, yeah.
Dan Moore state them.
Right.
In consideration of. Of the hay as well as. The overflow parking, so you, these are in line with a lot more trees that are closer. To um parallel to the trees that are already there.
Okay.
Um, if you're looking north to south.
Right.
Another thing is the community room of the Jonathan Trumbull Library. Um, you know, I thought we wanted to make sure that that view was still down, down the green without being.
We had a problem.
Yeah, you had to.
Right, right, so that's just something, but I, you know, we'll look at it, and as long as it's closer to the walking path, then it shouldn't be a problem. But that would be, if I if I'm looking at the Jonathan Trumbull Library and kind of going out, it looks where it is here, that it would. Impede the view um of the green from that community room.
Yeah, yeah, so, again, those trees are much closer to um Trumbull Highway.
Alright, um, they're not in the mowing area.
We're not in the mowing.
Alright, when you say mowing area, the hay area, hay area.
What? So you're not.
Okay, so those are across from the Beaumont House, it looks like, just so that we have a.
Right.
When we go out there walking.
So on your, I just wanna move to page thirty four. On page thirty four, Dean?
Thirty four.
On that one. We have a leach field, we have everything out there?
Yes. Basically from. The brown spot is the leach field for the library.
Okay, so also, and that's also gonna be um an emergency access.
Well, that's, I was just explaining to him if they restake, again, I was showing where this new access. Place is gonna be coming in to the green, getting these of the green onto that grass area. Right, so. In the guard row. About six, it's gonna be about eight feet, yellow line.
Right.
Off the library driveway, it's gonna go between those two trees, it's gonna be open.
Right.
Right.
For vendors or whatever.
Alright, so we're not even gonna look at these two stakes until you're, you're out there with. Yeah, Dennis or someone.
Well, there there's stakes out there now.
There are stakes out there now.
But these, for this right here.
This map.
We're not even gonna look at, no.
Don't use this map as accuracy.
Right.
If if I would look at this map more closely, if you look at the two dark spots to the um. Upper close to the yellow line.
Yeah.
Where those two trees are.
Yeah.
Those were, those two dots should be between those two trees, cause it's parallel, it's in line with those trees.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, here, right here, this is where the dots should be. Where is it related, where's the Christmas tree?
Um, right here.
Yeah, that little one.
Right?
Yeah, so here's a Christmas tree, we, our trees are right here. It's almost in line.
I got you, these trees aren't gonna go quicker than the Christmas tree, alright?
Or no, the sugar maple.
Alright, so that one, Dean, we're gonna take a look at those.
Yeah.
Alright, now, let's move down just to the south side, it looks like on the south side of the library. Alright, it looks like planting area M.
Uh, H.
H. H. Um, there's some hurdles that we have to get on that, has the library board. Trustees, have they been notified on this?
Yes, they they have, they have approved um funding.
Are you referring to the friends or the?
The friends.
So then we have the library board of trustees, the elected ones for the library.
They're, they're, they are aware of this effort.
Have they approved it?
Why why would they have to approve?
I don't, they didn't have.
Yeah, according to the library, they feel that they would have to approve.
It's town property.
They do have. They have some reservations against it, um as the current trees are currently blocking the natural light. This is also not a replacement tree, this is a new planting, and when Lindsay went to Phil. Phil said that we would need to have a full. Landscaping plan in order to make said changes, so that is.
Isn't this for the Julie Cult tree?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just sharing what has occurred.
That tree will be. It does, the Design Review Board is going to look at that on Friday.
So the library is.
The library trustees.
I think Lindsay has, um, I think Lindsay should be.
Oh, so, Phil did talk to Lindsay, so. It is look, as far as the Design Review Board, right, the Subcommittee for Planting and Zoning. They have jurisdiction over, what I think. They are going to. You would on Friday do a walk, they're, they're gonna do a site walk.
Site walk.
Both, both for the town property and in the green. And. Give their endorsement.
It took six months to get a bench at the library, cause it needed to be approved by all of the, so many entities, to then just put up a tree. Is, um, I think it just took, it was going faster than expected.
Your comment about the lighting though, are we talking about lighting today, like how the, how the property looks today?
I, yeah, I think that the outside light, the the natural light coming through the windows, um. Has been a concern, that they want some of the uh limbs, like, cut down, yeah, I have no idea.
It's uh.
It's new trees, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's uh whatever this stuff is, it's bushes.
Okay.
And they actually look pretty big, or don't, I mean, I think they look big. And they should be cut back, but I'm not sure if they're supposed to be that big over there.
Is this one staked? Is this one staked as well?
Yes.
It's basically where the old Christmas tree was.
Which, okay, yeah.
This is a hogwood which which has a maximum height, it's.
Yeah.
And it sits, it almost parallel to where the other, where the red. There's a red maple.
Uh huh, yes.
And as far as the the, the the village district or the green district, they, they have no jurisdiction, they just bring their opinions, right, to planning and so on. So, uh, this one, this one's just might take a little bit more massaging, if you will. Uh, we'll have to take a look at that one. So I I would just say, right now. Thirty four, we gotta really take a look at with the, with the three trees, so Dean, you're gonna.
Look at the helping with some staking coordination?
So it's already done.
So we're just.
For, for, no.
Yeah, they're staked.
He's gotta move on because of the guardrails.
You have to move them where the access for the guardrails.
Oh, oh.
I have to make sure they're not blocking this entrance by. Cause the entrance goes between those two trees.
So will they move, be moved by Thursday?
They're out there right now.
Maybe by six thirty.
Okay. No, I'm just saying, we want to have.
No, no, they're, they're, they're right around here, that's what I'm saying, what I'm saying, Robin, is here.
Guardrail is where.
Here, then there's gonna be a new access right here, twelve foot gap in the rail, so they can drive into the green here, I just wanna make sure they're not right here in this way. Cause if Chris talked about it, if they're over here, they're fine.
Yeah, that's where they are.
Yeah, that's where they are. Yeah, I'll look at it.
They're a hook around, yeah. Yeah, I just wanna be able to make sure we have that that wave.
They're north of the Christmas.
Right, yeah, they're north of the Christmas.
Yeah, they fill that gap in the country.
I used to. It's really bad.
They're way off. I'm terrible.
Not yet, it's better risk.
Um, okay, so thirty four, we're gonna be looking at. And then thirty five, perhaps on this side. So area. Yeah. So.
No, I thought there's sort of three of them there, is there, yeah, that's my thought, there's three.
Yeah.
But there's only one dot here.
One.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. So how big are these trees going to get, because they look kind of close together to me when I drive by them here.
Right, so we have. Um, as you can tell, we have a sugar maple tree. And oak. A river birch, the river birch is the smallest of the two. Um.
And then you have a red oak and a sugar maple. Yeah. Right. It just seems, they seem close together. Yeah.
So the river birch goes in the middle. Sure. Um.
Herbie has it on the side.
Yeah, Dan, so did, it was Dan Moore and. John Nichols recommendation to put those said trees there, knowing that when they mature, you may lose this tree eventually in fifty years. We do have some trees that are on the last. Yeah. What is this tree right here? Um. Big one over here. The. That big one.
Oh, the big, big one?
The huge big one to the left.
Wonderful.
That tree right there, yeah.
Yeah.
So they're looking at.
That tree's. Probably sixty years old, seventy.
And you think it's on end of life?
So what? What the committee was looking at, said, hey, you know, you'll have, you'll have that from that tree. It's it's like you're gonna have a new tree replacing them, so.
Planning for the future.
We're trying to put the new.
Yeah.
But Moore and um Nichols said. They're confident those trees could. Be sustainable in that area.
For 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 me here, I mean, I don't, you know, there's no, there's no septic, there's nothing that's out there. I don't, you know, I'm gonna defer to your expertise there.
Yeah, I don't defer to Nichols and um. Moore's recommendations for those locations.
So for page thirty five, this the. Does support have any issues with that, those three trees?
I'm just concerned of how big they're gonna get, and they're all in a row, that they're going to be like a blind, you know. If they if they get all together, it's gonna be a blind of that area.
Well, get it.
Big.
As long as they're managed.
Joan knows what she's doing.
What she's doing. Okay.
Space a tree.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, I would trust my judgment of the committee.
Right.
So I think on page thirty five, those three trees, I think we're in agreement, I'll go with there. I think all in all, we're gonna go over and check out the staking, the biggest thing for us is thirty four. You know, those three trees right there, I gotta get more information on the library, figure out what, you know, what. What what's going on there, and those two other trees. Dean's gonna help facilitate, you know, the staking of what they.
Yeah. He's gonna look at the staking. My dad doesn't like presenting the staking.
How's that with everybody? So we have some homework to do, we're gonna go look at stakes.
Great.
Alrighty.
Do we?
I thought it was a treasure hunt.
Do we want a motion regarding the trees that are at the. The far side of the green and the ones here, so that the inland, or no, the.
When you sign.
The design review, design review board.
And meet on Friday?
Yeah, yeah.
So what would you, what do you?
I'm so bet the trees on the north end of the green. And the south end of the green.
As displayed under map thirty five.
Yep.
Thirty five and thirty two?
Thirty two.
Thirty five.
Thirty five.
Yep, and thirty two. Yep.
Are approved to move forward.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
And then all the other ones are subjected to uh after.
Just review of.
Of uh.
The staking.
Of the state place.
During a walk.
Do we want to declare a site walk so that we can warn it and take action? On Thursday, we love paperwork.
Well, it's probably too late to warn for Thursday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, depending on how it is.
It's Tuesday, yeah. It's it's Tuesday now.
Uh, they're closed tomorrow, so they don't count that as a day.
No, they don't.
We have to, I can, I can post something real quick, we wanted to. And run down the hall and get it approved.
Is there really a need, I mean, I think we can set a motion to approval upon review.
Yeah.
Review of staking on Thursday.
This way here, we all can leave tonight, take a look at, okay, that looks good, that looks good. And get back with each other, got a thumbs up, got a question, whatever it may be.
That's fine.
Thank you, Dennis.
Dennis, thank you very much for you.
Can I ask, interject one thing, we have an outstanding um invoice from American. Landscaping.
Yes.
And lawn science that for fifty percent. Down payment.
Correct.
Um, will that be expedited?
It I told Haley to actually hold off.
Okay.
Until after this meeting, to figure out where we were, because I was under the assumption that. That invoice included the price of a tree.
And it doesn't, so.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
This, will we receive a revised?
Yes, so the so. The second invoice will reflect or. The revision, so they are not purchasing the trees.
Okay.
They will extract that.
And just make sure, I mean, I think on the, I was, so are we paying for all three options on the invoice?
Is that the intent?
Option one, two, and three, and they wanted fifty percent. But some said the tax excluded, some said including tax, and we're tax exempt.
Right.
So they shouldn't charge us tax at all.
Correct, they shouldn't try, because they are not, we're not purchasing anything, we're just, we're just purchasing services, not physical goods, right?
Right, and it still shouldn't be paid.
We don't pay taxes on goods either.
Is there any kind of warranty with the tree? Like.
I think it did say warranty on there.
The warranty will come from Pride's Corner, as we're purchasing, we are purchasing trees directly from Pride's Corner.
Yeah, if you could get me a revised invoice, we will be doing checks Thursday, so as long as we get it Thursday morning.
Talk to Sage together.
You know, with the correct, you know, and the requested amount of the fifty percent, and just make sure. None of the items are taxable.
Okay.
That'd be perfect, we get that, we'll get that, we'll get that off in line.
Okay.
That works out, I think we're good, there's no actionable items at this point, we're just gonna go up, oh, wait.
No, we have to.
We have to move.
We we have to make a motion. To move forward with.
Pages thirty two and thirty five, um, and then approval beyond review on Thursday, September eleventh, by the Board of Selectment.
For the rest.
For the rest.
Mm hmm.
Make that motion, do I have a second? I'll second and put, got it, second. I don't know for any other questions or comments?
Is the board okay with paying fifty percent?
Up services.
For services on Thursday?
You wanna include that, you wanna amend that to be included in this?
To include fifty percent deposit for the.
Did we already authorize expenditure or?
Yeah, the twenty thousand, yep.
Okay.
At a previous meeting.
Right, but that includes the.
Maintenance.
That that includes maintenance and the actual purchase of trees, where this is just services that we're doing now, but it's part of it.
Prove it again, because you already approved.
No, but I'm just. Because.
It's fifty percent.
It's fifty percent pending review of placement, so. Are you okay, I mean, I'm I'm sure we're still gonna go forward with it, at some point. Even if there are a few hiccups here or there, right?
That's, yeah, I agree with you, it's 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 a question of semantics, it's, you know, we always get it. So, yeah, so you don't mind an amendment to that, Kathleen?
Yes, I'll make the amendment.
Robert, you're all set with that? Okay, so we we got any other further questions or comments? You're not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Very good. Dennis, again, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I know it's a lot of work.
No, it's. Yeah, there's a lot of parties.
Okay. Um, seven point two, this does an act on the rental property price, uh, thirty six, ten, thirty ten, thirty seven.
Okay, so starting on thirty six, I did a price comparison of what we are currently charging. Then I did a comparison of all of the rental properties around. American Legion's, Roberto Law Cabin, Baptist Church, and Congregational Church. Also, in my notes, I made note of how much we pay for cleaning, which is not on yours, but I can share that information. Um, when we're trying to make some kind of. Revenue um for these things, so for the community center, for example, it is three hundred and sixty dollars per month. Um, that we are paying for it to be cleaned once a week. The space is used by the rec department and by other, you know, town entities, so we're thankful it's getting cleaned, but.
Mm hmm.
And then the fire safety complex, we pay over just a little over eleven hundred dollars a month, but that includes four different locations. So it's kind of hard to break down.
And and that's a month for one cleaning per week?
Uh, for the fire safety complex, it would be two uh two things and.
Two cleanings.
Wednesdays and Saturdays or Sundays.
Is that just for the hall, or is that for all the offices?
So that is, they only do the um hallway out near the residency truppers, they do the big hall, the pantry. And DPW. And then town hall. Is that any company coming to DPW?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. Um, so just more information, then on your page thirty seven, I have been just. Putting together some information of people who have reached out to rent and then came back saying, I'm sorry, it's out of budget. Um, I tried to include as much information as I had, if it was for like a party. You know, their feedback. Um. People, two people have called today and told me it was out of their price range, and they said, things might change, call me back on Thursday or Friday. Um. So there. It's a balance.
So I guess the question is, do we, we, it's a, do we, we're gonna take a look at this in the fall, we're looking at it now?
Mm hmm.
Is it, is there any palette to change the the price structure? The rental lease?
The insurance also, we make no money off of, and it is a requirement, so.
No, you pretty much gotta look at the first line. First line, it's the first line, right, and I think we should look to um revise it and. Make it cheaper in. With the end being that we are getting some revenue in in order to help for some of the cleaning, um, something is better than nothing. With getting revenue in to help. Um.
So I guess my question would be, what is? What's competitive, what are we looking, I mean, because we're 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 asking two hundred and fifty dollars for the community center?
Mm hmm, yes, yeah.
Uh, and I see your, you know, the other. The other costs that are here.
Mm hmm.
Um.
Like it did on seven.
I'd say one seventy five and.
For the community center?
Yeah.
I believe in the uh the insurance and the.
Yeah, there's nothing we can do with that, no, those we're gonna have to leave. So it's only that top line, but if we change that to. You know, even a hundred fifty. Hundred fifty and and.
To the board, I I.
Base fee is in line with the churches.
It is.
The the other.
Right, but they don't have those other fees associated with them.
That's what.
That's.
To me, that's where you look.
But.
But we have to have it.
For our insurance, we have to have, we have to require them to have insurance. When they rent the building.
Right.
Just to protect the town. I mean, unless you drop it a hundred on each.
On each, and that would be a hundred fifty and two two hundred.
And if anything, then, you know, if it starts. You know, being rented out, then you can revisit a year or two from now, maybe go up twenty five dollar, you know, go up smaller increments.
It's a board feel, you wanna drop.
I like that, I'd say, yeah, I'd say the.
Say that rental fee includes the insurance.
But they have to fill it out individually.
Because they they provide it, or they have an opportunity to buy through the.
Which is where I'm getting that number from.
Right.
So that's the hundred, whereas the fire safety complex is seventy five, but when people put it in incorrectly, they put down the fire station, and then it's a hundred dollar.
So in essence, Robin, that insurance. Were.
Is what we're.
We're including that.
Subtracting from the cost. But they still have to pay for their insurance, but by dropping the rental, the top line a hundred. They're still gonna have to pay the fifty and the hundred for insurance, and. So it's just rather than the bottom line, rather than being.
Fifty is refundable to clean, so that's not really a.
Right. If if, yeah.
Well, you know.
Yeah.
That's it.
Right, so basically, if we look at the bottom line of each. We change that from four hundred to three hundred.
Mm hmm.
And the bottom line of the fire safety complex, we'd change that to four.
Twenty five to four fifty.
Yeah.
They do their insurance wrong, I can't.
Yeah, that's.
What's the palette of this?
That's still, yeah, that's still a lot, I think, for the fire safety.
But it's a hall.
It is a hall, I know.
You know.
All right, so I I'm just gonna throw it out there, but let's just get something on the floor, we'll get this moving. Um, we'll reduce the price of each by a hundred. On the top.
The rental.
So the rental will be one fifty, one fifty.
Mm hmm.
With everything else the same.
Let's do this, yeah.
And then. And then.
And I'll, yeah, that's good.
So who made the motion?
You did.
You wanted it.
Did a great job.
Thank you, so, okay, you have that down pretty good? And then the fire safety complex, we're doing the same thing, right? Coming down.
Right, because if they don't use the stove or the oven, and they just bring in foods, then that's enough, that's a hundred, that's not included in that.
All right, any other questions or comments? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? I have it. Alrighty. Moving on. Seven point three, consider an act upon allocating twenty-five hundred dollars from tip to purchase a battery backup for the town halls, ballot box camera, in importance with state requirements. So we have a mandate from the state to do this, and we've been talking with, um, I keep, not the IT, we put the, uh.
We talked to a bunch of people about it.
So anyway, it's a, just a battery backup, just allocated for the one particular camera until Dean comes in here and gets us generate, generated power from an outside source.
It's specifically on page thirty-nine, number four, is what we are trying to, um, be able to do, uh, we don't have a generator, and so when we lose power, we need to get something through that server.
The motion. Great. Sounds, okay.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any other questions or comments, and this is just gonna go on to the tip.
Definitely.
Tip expenditures, all in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed? Abstentions, I have it. Um. Seven point four, consider an act upon the first election to sign a contract to migrate the Lebanon Town website to Web Central platform provided by Civic Plus.
So with page forty-one, I tried to just give you a basic rundown of our situation. Our website's backend is too old. We went to the advisory group, they formulated a lot of questions. Um, we also are required to be ADA compliant, um, which is why we are going to, it has been recommended that we're gonna go to the Web Central version of the backend of the website with AudioEye, which would make things bigger, give you dyslexia, be able to chain, not give you dyslexia.
It's next to, yeah, but.
Gotta finish that sentence. Uh, dyslexia widgets, um, and different contrast, so it's easier to read for vast populations.
Mm-hmm.
We have the numbers listed there. Um, we do not want to make any changes until after the election, without a doubt, and so a possible launch in January, February of next year.
Will that be in our budget?
We will have enough money in the budget, because they're not going to bill us till July one of twenty-six.
Okay.
We've already paid the four thousand nineteen, April of twenty-five through April of twenty-six. And I believe they're gonna make it effective July first, because just so they're on our fiscal year for billing.
I move to have, give Kevin the permission to sign this contract for Civic Plus.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed? I just have it sorted, all right, moving on to seven point five, at this point, I will entertain a motion going to executive session. Um, with, uh, Sarah, Jason, and Haley. Um, Dean, have a good night.
Thanks, Dean.
Bye.
Thanks, Jane.
I'll see you over at the cemetery commission in about a half an hour.
Yeah.
Can, do you mind closing the door behind you?
Close that door for.
Thank you.
I think we should create a policy, that if you volunteer on a border commission, you get a free plot.
Oh, that's nice.
Sorry, I missed it, what did you say?
Like a cemetery plot?
You're a volunteer in our community.
Yes.
You can get a free plot.
Free plot, yeah.
Really?
I'm off, I'm making a suggestion.
We put that under new business?
Remember?
Or.
Like, it'd have to be five years or like a month?
I don't know, probably.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's a great.
Beautiful.
Yeah, I think it is a good idea. So I just want to throw that out, so you'll see us going to cemetery. You know, I haven't bought my plot yet, so I need to buy a plot.
Let me know when you do years, I wanna be right next to you, so. They are, they are stalling out, so that's good.
You should do, honestly, I should make that suggestion to them.
Yeah.
Do we buy it on a new business or? Public service and you get a free.
Yeah, here's your benefit, thanks for your public service, because you got.
Because how much does it cost to buy one?
Five hundred bucks.
Five hundred bucks.
Well, what happened, if you already bought one, you're out of luck, this is, you know, holding from this.
Well, you're saying, I mean, we need to.
Incentivize.
Perhaps, anyway.
I think it's a great idea.
Appreciate, yeah, so should, am I putting it?
Well, maybe I'll go this, what are they reading?
Seven o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Through the community center, we're triple book.
Yeah.
Be next meeting.
In November.
So anyway, um.
This is session, here we are.
Thank you for coming in here. Um, basically, I've, I've been in conversation with Jason, Jason's our building official, at how many hours a, a week?
Well, it's however many it takes to get the job done.
Yeah, come on. So basically, it's, uh.
Well, we budget nineteen hours a week.
Right, on the current way, yep.
So looking to kinda, uh, to put. Oh, oh, thank you very much.
Got it. Was.
Thank you.
I know, whatever you call it. Good job, Robin, and.
Very good. Okay, with that, uh, going to the first thing, um, Cheryl, entertain a motion to, um, have our building official give me the verbiage of, um, part-time exempt salary.
At an annual salary of forty-two thousand five sixty-three.
Starting September twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Questions, comments? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, I have it. On the second, um, will the fire marshal, uh, uh, compensation for, um, work at the rent there, um. We're going to, um, bill out at fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour.
I make a motion that the fire marshal, bill hourly billable rate is fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents an hour.
The compensation.
The compens, I'm sorry, the compensation rate is fifty dollars and seventy-eight cents.
And the billable rate will be the same as what is billed for the police.
Police, right. And that'll be with the conversation, you know, there.
Do the same, I don't know. They gotta do the same thing.
They do.
So deputy and, uh, for the fire marshal and the deputy.
Yeah, I, I, yeah. So all.
For the rent.
The rent.
Like, yes, for the. But, yeah.
During something.
So with that, Cheryl, entertain a motion, you have the verbiage on that, if you need.
Do we want just a rent fair for twenty twenty-five, or do we want it in forever?
No, no, this is only for twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Critical contracts.
Yeah, so moved.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? Second, any other questions, comments? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, man. To move on.
Can you?
Is there anything else to come under new business? That's, I think you had a great idea, you wanna put that under now, you wanna wait? Um.
I think we should do it.
I think so, I think it's a great thing, I think we should, uh, look at, you know, exploring that and come on up with, um.
Are we adding it to the agenda?
Every commotion we add to the, well, I think we have to go to cemetery commission.
I think so.
I, I, and I have no problem doing that.
Yeah.
Great.
All right, sounds good, and any some criteria development? Right, develop, yeah.
I let the dog out.
Okay, thanks, Haley.
Thank you, Haley. All right, so, um, no other new business to come before this board? All right, let's move on to minutes, um, eight point one. Uh, I need approval to accept the minutes of the regular meeting from August fifth, twenty twenty-five, the pages forty-two through forty-nine.